Good afternoon. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee.
Yes, ma'am, I'm on a video.
Someone is talking. Thank you. In attendance, we have President Mosby, members of the committee, myself, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Costello, Councilman Glover, who's not in attendance yet, Councilwoman Porter, and Councilwoman Ramos is not here yet.
I got on just now.
Oh, great.
You, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other council members we have in the meeting. I don't see any. Members from the Office of the President, we have Nikki Thompson. I don't hear from Nikki. Do we have Matt Stagman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And do we have Aaron DeGraffan Reed?
I don't believe he's on at this time.
Thank you. Representative in the mayor's office, do we have Natasha Miho? Or Nina Temelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. All right, this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-003, excuse me, 0003, Baltimore City Work Group on Nuance Parking and Auto Businesses, for the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Work Group on Nuance Parking and Auto Businesses, providing for the composition, chair and staffing of the work group, requiring the work group to study certain matters relating to the illegal storage of motor vehicles for public rights of way by motor vehicle repair establishments and motor vehicle dealerships, and make certain recommendations, requiring the work group to report its findings and recommendations to the mayor and city council on or before a certain date, providing for a special effective date, providing for the termination of this ordinance, and generally relating to the illegal practice of using the public right of way as surplus private motor vehicle storage. This bill was introduced on January 11th at 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Ryan Dorsey. I will now open the floor to comments from the sponsor, Ryan Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the committee. Before we begin, we do have Senator Antonio Hayes with us. I believe that he is on now as an attendee. If we could get him elevated to be a panelist, I'd like to give a moment to him as soon as I finish here, Mr. Chair. I want to express my thanks to the senator for kind of prompting me to write up this workgroup bill, to have the idea to do this. He is certainly not the first to have called me and said, what do we do about this? I get a lot of calls as the, having served on the Trespass Towing Board for the city for the last four years, I get a lot of calls about anything that's related to towing and a lot, and, you know, just kind of vehicles being stored on streets being a problem. And, and he called me and said, you know, like, why is it so hard for us to address this? And the question, it's a good question because I think that we have kind of some of the tools, but maybe not all of the tools. To some degree, we rely on the state definition of abandonment and then, but then we also have to rely on DOT or BPD's processes, which are not necessarily the same for how we address abandoned vehicles. And some of them are on private property, which means that it's not DOT. It's, you know, it then involves the Housing Department. There are just a lot of cooks in the kitchen and a lot of different ways in which the problem arises of having automobiles stored in a way that not only takes up public space where other people could be parking, but generally presents kind of a hideous nuisance, particularly in cases where we're talking about vehicles that are in highly derelict condition. And, and so the question arose as to whether not only do we have the right tools or whether, you know, at the local level, or are we exercising all the powers that we have? Do we have everybody rowing in the same direction? But are there barriers to us taking effective action to quickly remedy problems that people notice all around the city? And let me tell you, you know, I bike a lot. You all know that. One of the things I love about biking is how much you're able to see. You're able to cover more ground than if you were walking, and you're able to slow down enough and see a lot more than you would if you were driving. And when I bike around the city, this is one of the things that I notice on city streets is the number of vehicles that are sitting around with flat tires or no wheels altogether, with broken out windows, with no tags on the front or the rear of the car. I notice these things, and when I, and I often notice them in bunches clumped together. And we all hear complaints about this happening in our districts. And so, you know, I think we just need to make sure we, if there are any state laws that we need to enable us to do more, we need this workgroup to help us to suss out what those might be. If there are any local laws that could improve our capacity. If we may have limitations by the state in terms of what we are able to do with local law. We need to know that, and this workgroup is intended to help us suss out all of that, as well as get everybody coordinated in their thinking. So there is an amendment that I heard that DLR is drafting up to address the, the concerns expressed by the Law Department. And I expect that to come around and just would, would ask that somebody move that amendment at some point. And now, Mr. Chair, as you and I discussed earlier, I'd like to defer for a moment to Senator from the 40th District, who is here to give his, you know, words of support.
Sure. Yeah, Senator Hayes. Floor is yours.
Okay. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Chairman and Mr. Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for introducing this legislation. Over the, the months of the pandemic, it became more and more prevalent as I think a lot of the city services were suspended due to the COVID-19 pandemic that we were facing. But as I ride around the city and especially, you know, areas where have socioeconomic distress, I see it definitely more prevalent in communities that I represent, whether it's Park Heights or, or Park Heights or Penn North. I don't see it as prevalent in some, some of the other neighborhoods. And I think, I believe that, you know, government is, you know, oftentimes our first defense to help with the decline in our communities. And so, and I'm not a big fan of city council resolutions. As you all know, I used to serve as the legislative director for the Baltimore City Council. But I do believe that there are times when we don't have all of the answers. And, and, you know, and I made several phone calls to various city and state agencies, unable to find out. And so sometimes it's important for the sake of the people that we would like to serve and the overcommitted responsibilities that our various city agencies have to sometimes step back a little bit and evaluate the program and look at it in detail and find solutions before we step to an ordinance. And I believe that this is a good effort to do so on behalf, that's being sponsored by Councilman Dorsey. I look forward to working with the council in the city of Baltimore and any endeavors that you all come up with. But I think the, the, the work of this workgroup will identify other efficiencies that can be used on behalf of city government to help, one, you know, provide a good neighbor relationship, but also hold those people accountable far as, you know, making communities and neighborhoods more attractive. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to hold you much longer. I have to get on to a Senate Finance Committee. But I thank you so much for the opportunity for allowing me to share with you this afternoon.
Thank you, Senator Hayes, and thank you for taking the time to talk to us and thank you for the work you're currently doing in Annapolis to represent Baltimore.
Absolutely.
So with that, we'll, we'll move to questions from the committee. Excuse me, excuse me. Agency reports. We'll hear a question, agency reports from the, from the agencies. So we're going to start with the Law Department.
Yes. Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the city's Law Department. We had two required amendments to make the bill line up with state law and the city charter. And I believe the text of those amendments have been emailed to the, to you as well as to Tony DiFranco in Legislative Reference and to Samuel Johnson. I can go over them if you want, or you can, you know, read them through your email. But essentially, it just, it helps clarify the bill. And as long as those are included, we have no problem with the legal sufficiency of the bill and would sign it.
Thank you, Hillary.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to just review the substance of that quickly?
Can you please?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. The amendments strike a couple of lines. So I, I pertaining to the city, the Police Department being included as a, a member of this workgroup. We don't have the power to make them a member. We are certain from their bill report and from, you know, the continued demonstrated willingness of the commissioner to be a team player and participant here, that they will want to participate. And so even if they are not included in here legislatively, we expect that they will. And we don't have the power to order the mayor to name anybody as a chair. And I just, given the nature of the work, I don't necessarily think that it's, it's necessary for this workgroup to have a chair. And so this amendment strikes the Police Department from being a member of this workgroup and strikes the designation of anybody being named as a chair of the workgroup. That's it.
Thank you for clarifying, Councilman Dorsey. We'll jump back into agency reports. Next up, we've got the Department of Transportation.
Afternoon, Mr. Chair. Baltimore City DOT stands by its bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Thank you, Liam. Next up, we've got the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We too stand by our report. We do not object to the passage of this legislation. And I did want to recognize that we have Deputy Commissioner Hessler and Deputy Commissioner Booker on the call. We recognize that inter-agency collaboration would be a great benefit to address these nuisance businesses. And we look forward to working with various agencies to try to get to the bottom of this problem. Thank you.
Stephanie, I think I lost you for a second. I don't know if it's just me or if everyone missed out. Can you repeat once again your, the stance for ACD?
Sure. We do not object to the passage of this legislation.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Police Department.
Hi there. My name is Michelle. For the record, my name is Michelle Wertzberger. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I am also joined here this afternoon by Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown and Legislative Affairs Coordinator Shannon Conway. Councilman Dorsey adequately discussed our position. We are absolutely happy to participate in this workgroup. We, we think it's important that we work collaboratively to solve this issue. I cannot tell you how many times over the, the last year I've been on a, a part of emails with Mr. Davis and others on this call to try and address individual issues in communities. And so we are absolutely happy to be a part of the solution.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I also failed to mention that we're also joined from DOT by Safety Division Chief Toby Goodwin. My apologies.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Mara James from the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into questions from the committee. We're going to limit it to two questions in the first round and one question in the second if needed. We'll just jump right into it. Are there any questions from the committee members? Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Councilman Dorsey, for bringing this to us. I was curious, it, it seems like the bill is really geared towards the, these businesses that are dealing with abandoned cars around them. I have several in my district, but we also have just people randomly leaving cars everywhere. And it may not be, you know, within the area that there would be a business that's working on the cars. Is this going to address that as well?
Thank you, Councilwoman. This, my focus here was really on places where we have kind of a concentration of these cars, where it's not just one here, one there. We do have a lot of abandoned vehicles around the city. Lord knows, I've had a whole bunch of photos sent to me in the last few hours. But there's a particular issue, I think, around businesses, whether they be operating legitimately or not, because there are certainly not only some bad operating chop shops within, you know, legit businesses, but also, you know, just unlicensed businesses operating out of residential garages or just other properties that have not been zoned as auto shops. That's kind of a big part of this issue here is that when I said before in my opening remarks, you know, a lot of cooks in the kitchen, we have, you know, we have use permits granted through the zoning office or the zoning board to be able to use properties for like shops. But we don't issue a business license for, you know, the city doesn't have a, an auto repair business license that one has to apply for. And then we have, you know, we do have, I, I can say in your district, right? There, I know a couple of places at the corner of Frisbee and 33rd. For the la, you know, for the last 20 years, every single day or every single week, it's been a new rotation of one car sitting there with a for sale sign in the window. It's a new, you know, a guy probably does a great business selling one car at a time from that exact spot. But, you know, that's the kind of, but that also happens on a larger scale. For example, at the corner of Orleans and Gay Street, this one business is basically using that as a used car lot for multiple cars on this similar level of rotation. And that's where, you know, that's where the, the scale at which I think we need a more targeted approach. I think that, you know, it's in a lot of cases, just a matter of diligence when it comes to trying to get rid of one car here or there. But it also is a problem that even one car can be elusive when the Department of Transportation comes out and chocks the tires and then comes back two days later and the car's been moved, you know, 50 feet down the street, but only to evade citation. And then it's, you know, they get chalked in that same place and they get moved another five feet or whatever. Each individual car can be a taxing kind of burden to try to go after it again and again. And that's a big part, that is a part of this problem, and that, that is something that we need to get to the bottom of.
Thanks. May I follow up, please, Mr. Chair? I guess that'll be my second question. I, yeah, I have one behind my old campaign office over on, it's actually on Venable between Barclay and Greenmount as well. And I know those guys. They're very friendly, but, you know, don't even know whether they're supposed to be there. But, and their cars are everywhere. So I, I appreciate that you're addressing that particular issue. I just wonder whether we should add to this commission, the, or the workgroup, thinking about sort of the random vehicles that are out there as well, given that that's a similar situation. But I can, you know, talk with my colleagues and see if that's something that we want to add or if that's something that we want to add, or if you just want to keep it very focused on the businesses part.
I think that those individual vehicles are a part of what will come out of this. I mean, I, you know, my experience, Toby is always a phone call or a text message away. And, you know, he's really good at being responsive about, about vehicles. And I know I have some pet peeves, and, you know, on top of, you know, a vehicle here and a vehicle there, I have some personal pet peeves that I send over to him. And he's really great about addressing this. But I do know that there are some limitations, and I think that those same limitations in how, how aggressively or how effectively we can address individual vehicles, they're the same, same things that this is intended to, you know, bring out. Basically, if there is a shortcoming in the state or local law, we're going to discover it in this workgroup and better, you know, make recommendations on how to better empower DOT, BPD, and others to address this problem, including individual vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. Any other questions from committee members? Councilman Burnett.
Just wanted to, more than a question really, but thank Councilman Dorsey for taking this up. He did ask for testimony. I have one person that wasn't able to make it today, but is a pastor that is across the street from a auto repair facility that actually kind of encompasses a lot of sort of what Councilmember Ramos was saying in sort of their attempts to evade their enforcement techniques. So they will look for the markers or rip off the, the orange stickers for removal, or move the vehicles around. And it's very much a cat and mouse game with this particular facility that takes up church parking and makes it so that the parishioners have to, you know, further down the streets, public streets, and they understand, obviously. But it's, it's not ideal. So just, thank, thank you for taking this up. Looking forward to working with this workgroup. And I'll, I guess, once the dates become public and if there is more opportunity for engagement, I'll make sure that the pastor at that church and any other constituents that have raised those concerns can, can sort of voice both their concerns and ideas that they may have to improve how we, how we deal with this in Baltimore. So I want to thank you and Senator Hayes for taking this up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Any other questions from committee members or? Councilmember Porter?
I did have a question. So I echoing, you know, what Councilwoman Ramos and Council, Councilmember Burnett, we're talking about. It's a pretty big issue in District 10 as well, I can think of it, in Haytown and one in Brooklyn, that we've been having significant issues with, with trying to get them not only shut down, but also just kind of playing that cat and mouse game as far as the process of getting those abandoned vehicles up. I did have a quick, quick question about the definition of auto businesses. Have, have you decided what, what's the definition of an auto business? Because I'm thinking if there are, if, if it's an expanded, expanded definition, we have other businesses that kind of would, would fall under that as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is your, the intent here was to be pretty broad and encompassing in, you know, what the group could and should be looking at and be able to take with some discretion, you know, what the concerns may, you know, understand where the concerns really aren't and not try to catch things that, you know, it's not intended for. But we don't have a definitions section in here, right? I mean, we don't have a, a definition for auto-related businesses in here. Is there a particular, can you help?
So I'm trying to, and this is similar to what you have brought up yesterday about common definitions that are used not only in resolutions and ordinances as well. And so I just want to make sure that when we're, when we're defining the type of businesses that we're using, you know, if this is something we're creating from a broad approach, we include all of those businesses within this type of workgroup as well. So we're, we're looking at this problem from a systemic perspective, including auto businesses, traditional and non-traditional into this workgroup as well. Like, I would hate for us to do all this work, and it strictly only relates to the traditional definition of auto businesses. It's, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, the problem of nuisance parking is, is something that can be, that can be related to other, other businesses, not technically labeled as auto businesses as well.
Sure. I think that that's all, it all seems like real fair game for this group to, to be looking at. It's really, first and foremost, about the nuisance parking. But to kind of help people like have a sense of what jumps out, you know. In my mind, in particular, it's, it's also, there's, there's businesses that are doing, like I said, legit auto repairs, and there are businesses that are just like, you know, hack-run kind of chop shops. But then there are other things that are not related at all to auto businesses that I think we will, we will develop the strategies and kind of, like I said, get everybody rowing in the same direction to address all manner of other kind of nuisance parking issues.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Any other questions? Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Dorsey, thank you for introducing this. We have a chop shop right off of the 600 block of North Fremont Avenue. It's located in the Knife Council District. Councilman Block is up to speed on this. It results in vehicles that do not have tags, et cetera, being parked in Heritage Crossing, which is on the east side of North Fremont Avenue of the district. I just wanted to voice that I am sick and tired of hearing these concerns. So I really appreciate your leadership on this issue. And hopefully, this will result in some recommendations that can be implemented to deal with what is clearly a very systemic issue throughout the city. I will note that this does have the support of the Heritage Crossing Residents Association, who have been dealing with that issue as well. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I'm going to move. Oh, Stephanie, you have a question?
Yeah, it's just a follow-up comment. The definitions for various motor vehicle repair shops are all in the zoning code as well as the zoning tables. So if that's something that needs to be amended, that's probably something the task force or workgroup would look at. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Give me one second, folks. All right, we're going to jump into the amendments, and we're going to post the amendment so folks can see the changes that have been made. There we go. So everyone should have received this in their email. As we discuss, the amendment does two things. It strikes the chair requirement from the bill, and then also strikes the police department from the bill. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the amendment.
Oh, hold on one second. Before we move forward with the amendment. Okay, so what we're going to do is just, we're putting the amendment up so folks have a chance to visually see the changes that are being recommended. If you have any additional questions for the agencies or for the sponsor based on this amendment, please take a chance to look at it before we make a decision on it. Any questions? All right, so you know questions, we're going to move on to public testimony. We'll now hear for public testimony. Please be clearly into the microphone and state your name for the record. So the instructions are now posted. The committee staff will coordinate public testimony. So please be patient. If you're connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you're unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or provide their testimony in the chat function. With that, we'll begin hearing testimony. We've got Jed Weeks.
Thanks, Chairman Conway, and members of the committee. My name's Jed Weeks. I'm the registered lobbyist for Bike More, representing thousands of our supporters who walk, bike, and take transit in Baltimore. I'm also representing my neighborhood, Remington, as the land use committee chair of the Greater Remington Improvement Association today. We're here to support this. Nuisance parking is like a major safety issue for vulnerable road users, and we define that as people who walk and bike and take transit, use wheelchairs. And there are citywide examples of problems in every district of this. Efforts Bike More has undertaken, including a 3-1-1 campaign and forwarding regular problem spots of this across all districts in the city to DOT with photo documented evidence over the years, have historically done nothing to address these challenges. Focus on a couple examples here, just closer to my home in Remington. On Maryland Avenue, South and North Avenue, the former automobiler dealership there would park vehicles in the cycle track almost every day and threaten physical violence toward anyone complaining or reporting those vehicles via 3-1-1. I experienced this personally when they threatened to stab me. And my wife also was threatened and had a bottle thrown at her. So 3-1-1 just is not a great system here for this. On East 25th Street, DOT is currently undertaking a major streetscape project that costs millions of dollars. And they're doing that in part because of the safety challenges imposed by illegal parking all over that city right of way and sidewalk. On Howard Street, particularly south of 25th Street, on the automobile corridor there, vehicles parked for sale and repair block the sidewalk access to bus stops consistently, forcing people, especially those with limited mobility or in wheelchairs, into a high-speed, dangerous street to wait for the bus or try to pass. And on 26th Street, just a block from my house, that street is basically treated as a junkyard of vehicles, which leads it to become a major dumping spot for people turned away from the System Street Dump or when the System Street Dump is closed. And it also has led to several crashes recently because people have been trying to navigate around those vehicles when other high-speed traffic is moving by. So overall, just very supportive of this legislation, and thank you for our time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jed. Next, we've got James Biddle. James Biddle? We can't hear you, James. Okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to you, James. We're gonna go to John Fowler.
Good afternoon, John Fowler, Vice President of Hamilton Hills Neighborhood Association. Just basically want to piggyback on what Councilman Dorsey said. We've got at least two problems here with this issue. One is a business which parks derelict vehicles on Hartford Road, end up getting crashed into and consuming city resources, be they BPD or DOT. The other is a private residence off of Echordale that currently has seven tagless vehicles on a public right of way in various states of disrepair. Sometimes code enforcement goes when there's a call, sometimes they don't. But it's also an eyesore at a location. It's already a nuisance property. And we appreciate the council looking into this and any remedy they could provide as a result.
Thank you. We're going to go back to James Biddle.
My name is James Biddle. I'm a resident of District 12, Station North. Thank you to the committee for creating this ordinance, which will create a more streamlined response to nuisance parking by auto repair businesses. In my personal experience, the combination of the existing laws and enforcement levels are inadequate in preventing long-term abuse of public space. While airing grievances against a business is not a productive use about this committee's time, it is important to briefly highlight my personal experience with nuisance dumping and how Baltimore may move forward with long-term solutions to the problem. In my neighborhood, there's an auto repair shop occupying an entire city block of metered parking spaces and an entire alley with crashed and disassembled cars. This block is adjacent to restaurants on Charles Street, such as Orto and Alma, which are denied much-needed parking for delivery and carryout orders. Junk cars from this business also hinder the passage of garbage trucks, emergency vehicles in the alley. This block directly feeds into the Jones Falls Trail. Bike traffic is pinched on blind curve to uncoming traffic to obstructing vehicles, and broken glass from crashed cars in the parking lane causes frequent tire punctures and has injured dogs while people are out for a walk on the trail. Businesses have stored open containers of motor oil on the sidewalk, and an oil slick is easily seen coming from the vicinity during storm. This well-used block has significant quality of life issues directly caused by the nuisance parking. However, residents are not given a clear path to mediating the issue. The average response time for my DOT abandoned vehicle service request was over to 80 days. This was enough time for the shop to replace the junk car in the parking spot with a different one. Since the new junked car did not match the description on the service request, every single one was gone on arrival. ACD does not currently offer a service request type that completely addresses the problem. Because the shop uses hourly metered spots, the cars are frequently ticketed. However, the shop considers the ticketing, cost of doing business, and the problems remain. If this bill is approved, the work group has many options to fix the issue. As suggested by the bill, a business license will collect data, standardize acceptable practices, and raise funds. I would like to point out that parking revenue is down to $2 million a month, whereas before the pandemic, it was $6 to $8 million a month. There is most likely no budget for most new inspectors, but what if a vehicle or property inspector opened a, quote, nuisance parking investigation for a specific business? And different agencies could collect info in one place over time. An investigation could be opened on the suggestion of one councilperson or the community organization as well. Fines resulting from chronic abuse of public space should be steep enough to curb behavior and compensate the city fairly. If a business does not have the space to house its vehicles on site, it should be directed to acquire properly zoned vacant land. Alternatively, they could buy to pay high fees for the use of adjacent public space if certain conditions are met regarding the general upkeep of the vicinity. Before any of these fixes are implemented, we must have agencies come together and determine the best course of action. This bill will accomplish this and be the first important step in improving the quality of life for city residents in Baltimore's fiscal situation. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Now we're going to move into.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just want to ask if Mr. Biddle could send that. It sounds like that's a written, prepared piece of testimony. I'd love if he could send that to the committee for the bill file and to me. I'd love for the, because it contains a lot of great ideas in it that I think the work group would benefit from having at the outset. You know, it's a good reminder, you know, in talking with Councilman Burnett about corner stores and the need to address the specific kind of property usage problems that are associated with that, and be able to better associate things that happen out in the public right of way with those businesses as a way of holding them accountable. What Mr. Biddle has elaborated here are things that I have long thought about, these auto businesses, that that while they kind of maybe factor in enforcement to their business model, occasionally giving them a ticket, that there needs to be some sort of elevated status for kind of known chronic offenders that would be a greater deterrent. So I'd love to have that for the file. Thank you.
James, if you could do us a favor and send that testimony to Councilman Dorsey. And Councilman Dorsey, if you can share that, we'll make sure that's available.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Next up, we've got Andy French.
Hello, this is Andy French, and I just want to say thank you to Councilman Dorsey for initiating this bill. And I fully support kind of the underlying bill and everything that will take a hard look at finding durable solutions to the issues that clearly are faced across the city and specifically in my neighborhood in Union Square of West Baltimore. We've had significant issues with nuisance parking from surrounding auto businesses, as well as consistent verbal threats to myself and several of my neighbors from the property owner of one auto body shop, while we have tried to find a solution to the ongoing issues from the nuisance parking, noncompliance with city code and businesses' operations that continue to put the surrounding residential neighborhood at risk. The overflow cars from the three operating auto body shops near my home, one of which was just approved by the city council for a single-spot zoning change, making it the third contiguous auto body shop, regardless of the already existing nuisance parking and operation issues. But the overflow issues cause a near constant headache for myself and all, almost all of my neighbors, from derelict and abandoned cars strewn about the streets, sitting on surrounding blocks up to three or four blocks away, sitting in the same spot for months, blocking emergency vehicles from accessing the streets. We've got a firehouse right up the way, and causing traffic congestion, anything from just the the cars that are constantly sitting there to a truck that is owned by one of the auto body shops that has basically been blocking the the viewing of a two-way intersection for, it's been sitting there for at least two months. And no, none of the compliance stuff has worked so far, and the cars just move around the block when when they're faced with picketed or or anyone coming around. So with all that, thank you again to Councilman Dorsey and other council members for initiating this working group. I would strongly encourage you to visit the 1700 block of Hollands and Frederick Avenue in West Baltimore and the surrounding blocks to get an acute sense of how much of an issue this is for our neighborhood as part of this working group, and hopefully find some common sense solutions that can be identified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Is there any other testimony? We're gonna, we're gonna go to caller one. You're gonna hear your your phone make two beeps. If you have a testimony, please make, please take the opportunity to do so. If you do not, please let us know, and we'll move on to the next caller. So right now we have caller one.
Hello, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you please state your name?
Yes, my name is Cynthia Foot. I'm from the Tawanda-Brantley Neighborhood Association off of Rice's Town Road. And we have a great concern of the car dealerships, chop shops in the area. They have 100 to 200 cars in between Classon Avenue and Rice's Town Road, which is the 4,200 block of Rice's Town Road, and the 2,800 block of Quantico, and the 4,200 block of Tawanda. They have tow trucks, they have buses, they have half, half-cabs, empty trucks, chopped up cars, all up and down Rice's Town Road by the Kitty Castle, which is a daycare center. They're all over the street. They take batteries out, they mess up his trash. We have a park right across the street. No one can park on Rice's Town Road. The people that live on Rice's Town Road in the 4,100 block can't park in their residential area because they have the whole street blocked off. We've called 3-1-1, we've talked to Senator Antonio Hayes, we've talked to the police department, we've been trying, we've been dealing with this for several years. And it's, you know, it's like it's gotten worse since the pandemic. So we're just, we're in agreement with this bill, and we hope that when, if the bill does get passed, that it will make a difference because they're still, they, they don't, they can get citations, and they still park there. There's so many cars, they, they're parking them behind the building on the residential park where they have a hill. And it's, it's trash, it's cars, it's broken up cars that doesn't have any tires. I mean, they take them all off. It's just, it's just a mess. And I'm just in agreement with the bill, and I hope it do pass. And I'm Cynthia Foot from the Tawanda-Brantley Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next caller. You're going to hear two beeps. And if you have a testimony, please take the opportunity to give us that. Nothing here. So we'll move on to the next person. If you have a testimony, you'll hear two beeps, and then please state your name.
Hi, my name is Christine Roudin. I live on the 1700 block of Hollands. I am Andy French's neighbor. And the parking spaces are, the chop shops that exist there are huge nuisance. Specifically, the 1700 block of Frederick, that is the main corridor of ambulances and the medical department. And many times, they can't drive through it. They drive into the street, and they have to find a way to back up. There are current things that the city can do right now, like such as picketted those vehicles who are completely blocking that main artery of emergency vehicles. And so is this the committee going to look into why the city does not really enforce what they can do? And then also, the, I believe that the committee should also include the fire department because they're also greatly affected by the nuisance of these illegal parking and using blocks of, as an entire parking lot. So that is my recommendation. And thank you for looking into it. But I think that the city can do something now by picketing the existing vehicles that are basically, you know, double, triple, quadruple parked, blocking whole blocks and the flow of traffic. That's something that they can do now. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's all the testimony that we have lined up. So we're going to move on to the amendments. Do we have a motion to to accept the amendment?
So moved.
We've got it moved by Councilman Cohen and seconded by Councilman Burnett. Roll call. Myself, Conway, yay. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover is absent. Porter?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
The amendment passes, and we are going to move on to to the bill. Is there a motion to move the bill as amendment, as amended, favorable as amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We've got Councilwoman Porter with the motion, and Councilwoman Ramos seconded. Roll call. Conway, yay. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover's absent. Porter?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
The bill, we'll move on to second reader at the next council hearing. Thank you, guys. We're going to take a two-minute recess before we move on to the next bill, just so folks can. can gather themselves.